It's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, August 28th. Jordan, would you start us off with a roll call, please?
Please respond by stating present. Councilmember Ronane.
Present.
Foeburg.
Present.
Lee Belt.
Present.
Rife.
Present.
Johnson. Ryan Boldt.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Norv Strop.
Present.
Mayor Shoneman.
Present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. First order of business will be to approve this week's agenda. I'm not aware of anything that needs to change, so we'll take a motion as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Councilman Norv Strop. Second, Councilman Ryan Boldt, any changes that anyone would have? All right then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next order of business, of course, is our approval of minutes for the meeting of last week, which took place on August 21st. Someone care to make a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Councilwoman Lee Belt. Second, Councilman Ronane, any changes or commentary to add to the minutes before we commit to them? All right then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. No one that I saw is here to speak at our open forum, so we'll move along to our consent calendar where we've got five items of routine city business. I would take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Rife. Second, Ryan Boldt, any changes or comments from the council before we take a vote on our consent counter? All right then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion carries. One item of old business, that item is the possible second reading and final adoption of the ordinance title 230802, which supplements budget for Parks, Rec., and Forestry Department activities. Jordan kind of got into it last week about the details of that for the Boy Scouts and us. So, Jordan, no changes?
Thank you, Mayor, no changes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Councilman Ryan Boldt. Second, Councilman Ronane, any final thoughts or words on this before we take a vote? All right then, Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Ryan Boldt.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. In new business, we've got a possible first reading of an ordinance, which is titled 230801. It amends daycare in Chapter 14, Businesses and Business Regulations of the Aberdeen City Code. Ron distributed the contents of that a while back, but I will kick him the microphone to explain a little bit about how this came to be and what effect it will have on our daycare code.
Thank you, Mayor Shoneman. This has been in the works for a while. The city had been watching and waiting for the final rules to be promulgated by the South Dakota Department of Social Services regarding its family daycare programs. Our correlation to that is our home daycare program, which is licensed by the city. What you'll see with this amendment is an effort to address some of the child-to-adult ratio issues that they have, and we've also taken this as an opportunity to clean up some other matters that we had and that actually sprang to some, or confirmed to some degree within the new DSS rules. But the agenda packet includes the, of course, the overview for the request for council action and the red line changes that we're promoting. Also included is a copy of a letter that was written to the, to all 55 of our licensed home daycare providers. And what we offered up, and this was a conversation that we had with the city manager, finance officer, and city attorney, to look at a substitute operator program. We have a couple of our licensed daycare providers who in truth are simply just workers at a couple of daycares. But what we found time and time again is that our licensed, our family home daycare centers struggle with when they need to be absent for a short period of time. So we looked at the substitute operator as something akin to a substitute teacher, where if they meet the minimum requirements, and the requirements to become a home daycare operator are fairly minimal, but if they meet those, then they could arguably put themselves out to make themselves available as like a substitute teacher and work at daycares when they're needed. So that is something new within this. The commentary from our daycare providers, and I won't pretend that there was a lot, but we did have a few, and they were generally supportive of the substitute operator. But you'll note that attached to the packet was also the complete copy of the South Dakota Department of Social Services rules. They revamped their program. And for those of you who actually took the time to read through that, you'll see that there are significant requirements placed by the state upon anyone who wants to be a registered family daycare. We do not require all of that to become a licensed home daycare. For that reason, we are not advocating or supporting that a licensed home daycare provider get to do everything that a registered, state-registered family daycare provider. So we are comfortable with sticking with our child-to-adult ratios. We're comfortable with our program as it has existed for years and would recommend that the council approve first reading of the amendment to the home daycare ordinance.
Move approval of the amendments.
I'll second that.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronane and a second from Councilwoman Lee Belt. Ron, so I'm curious, so logistically speaking, say this was primarily targeted at operators that are working within the confines of their personal residence. If they're gone on vacation, the substitute would presumably get the keys to their home and take over their home, and that's how that operation would continue?
Again, the language that we use is temporarily absent, so yes, that would in fact be the case. We've had, the comments that I've heard are that people would only use that, a provider would only use that substitute operator if they had at first cleared it with their parents. They want their parents to be comfortable with that. And again, that's perfectly appropriate. In fact, that's what, as a parent, I would prefer that as well, but it wouldn't be required. But essentially, yes, you are making your home their home for that temporary period while you're away.
But it couldn't be at the other person's house?
No. It's only at an approved location.
And so, walk us through real quick the requirements that the city has on those individuals, and currently it's tied with the homes, but it'll be a different criteria for the individual caretakers?
Right. So you'll have a licensed operator, and that operator will be at a specific location. And that location gets inspected. It has to go through planning and zoning for a special exception approved by the zoning board, but that particular location is vetted in advance to make sure that it's appropriate to have a home daycare. That provider, that licensed operator at that location has to have passed the background check, as does any adult within the home, has to pass the background check. They also have to have, again, the minimum is CPR certification, so they have that. It's a fairly simple process to get approved. But the substitute operator then would go through the background check, would have the CPR certification, and could be called in by that operator, by the owner of that home to help out when they need to be temporarily gone.
So they would be tied to the location itself?
Yeah. They are tied to the location. The operator could float.
I mean, so long as they received that approval from the others?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I have a question about temporarily.
Go ahead.
It's a pretty big word.
It is. And I use-
It's very vague in this document.
It's one of those deals where you can kind of define it to the point where it becomes a page long, because temporarily is going to be something we won't know until we see when somebody challenges that. So would a month-long absence be temporary? I would argue that it's not. That it's intended to be for those short periods of time, for somebody to take a brief holiday, attend an appointment. If they find a family emergency has sprung up, that they'll be gone for several days. But temporary, to me, does not mean more than that.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Didn't we define vacant, though, when we're talking about houses, in terms of time? When we were talking about vacant houses, didn't we have a definition of time with that?
I'm trying to think if we had some kind of a period of time where it would be considered vacant. I don't believe we had that within that ordinance. But again, that's a very good question, Councilwoman Foeburg, about defining what we mean by temporary, and I'm certainly willing to put together something, because I don't think it's a bad idea.
Well, let's talk about the root concern there. If we've got someone that the city feels is a qualified operator and then a second qualified operator, does it really matter if it's nine months, or two months, or one month?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
As someone who has two-year-olds in at-home daycare currently, I really care about this, and I think it's important to note, if you have children in an at-home daycare, I would assume, you know, my husband and I take turns dropping them off and picking them up, but we have regular communication with her. When I think about temporarily out of order, or whatever it says, obviously, that's probably not the wording, but if my daycare provider was to need surgery and take four weeks or six weeks off, I wouldn't want them to say, oh, you can't have a temporary person for that time. It doesn't work, because losing her as my daycare provider, to me, would be way more detrimental, or not, or having to find, when she takes one day off for a golf tournament, I'm like, do you want two cheerleaders that are really fun? You know? It's not easy in our lifestyle to lose that provider. So I definitely don't want to do anything that makes their life harder in that way, because sometimes, you know, the temporary piece is, six weeks to me is temporary. I mean, and the idea that we would make anyone's life more difficult for that if something happened, I definitely don't want that by putting super-strong stipulations, but now two years, probably going to find somebody different, you know? And I think that that's, daycare regulations and that kind of stuff is really important, but stuff like that, I feel like, as a parent, I'm definitely watching that kind of thing. If there's, if somebody is in my daycare provider's home, I know them, it's been very normal that they're there and helping, and I don't know that.
And honestly, to kind of take that one step further, I would say that a number of young people that have children in at-home daycares that I work with, or just know personally, that's always their biggest frustration, is that, oh, now they're going to go to Hawaii for the week, and so they've got to not go to work themselves.
Normally they close.
Figure something out, right? I know that it's constantly a challenge for those people whenever this daycare does just close.
Mr. Mayor? Can I offer this? That definition of substitute operator is set forth at 14-107. If there is some indication that you would like parameters on what temporary means, you could add at the end of that, not to exceed X number of days. That might, you know, address both your concerns, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, to be clear, I wasn't, I'm not really concerned that, I agree with Tiffany, if someone needs to have heart surgery, I'd rather have a childcare provider than not have a childcare provider for those weeks that they're recovering. Mine is just like, what is the right of the parent to know? Like, if you say you're going to be gone for two weeks and then you're gone for two months, is there a point at which you can break whatever contract you've made, or in, like, the right of the consumer, I guess, is really what I was thinking of, to be clear?
Yeah, and I'm thinking from a logistical standpoint, if an operator were to tell their, you know, sister or good family friend or whoever this step-in person is, they probably aren't going to do that for free. They're probably going to be taking the revenue from, I would imagine, they're going to be compensated, and like, I would just expect that that probably would run its course. It's not like it's going to be something where the person that's leaving is making all the money, and the person that's stepping in is just doing it for, out of the kindness of their heart. So I would imagine that the finances there would probably solve some of those issues. Josh, what have you got?
Ron, I didn't see a threshold here, the number of children before you're considered a daycare. It's at the definition of home daycare, right above on page two of seven of the ordinance. Talks about regular care and supervision of no more than 12 children. Okay. And that's, that language right there that you see tracks state law. And there's no minimum number of children? No, it can be 12 or less. I mean, it could be down to one, I suppose.
So your concern is like, could you just watch four kids for other people?
I'm just curious, you know? I'm sure there's instances where grandpa and grandma are watching grandkids, and is that, you know, is that going to fall under this? Well, technically, if they're doing it for compensation, then they are required to be licensed home daycare. Again, that's what we have. If you're doing it for hire, short of babysitting, you know?
And so, in terms of the notification to the parents themselves, is that addressed at all?
It's not. Again, that would be between the parents. And some of these are self-correcting. I mean, if you've been told this person will be there for two weeks, then you're now on week three, the parent might say, that's it, I'm moving my child.
So if, let's say that this passes as written today, and then there were concern in talking amongst each other, and something like that notification of parents where requirement or X amount of days was considered to be, to take this from being temporary to no longer temporary, is that something that would make, mark a substantive change to the dialogue here?
Probably, but that's fine. We just kick it back another meeting.
Okay. Anyone else have any to contribute on this one?
The only, Mr. Mayor, sorry. The only other thing that I didn't think about, I guess I've never signed a home daycare contract, so I definitely had to sign stuff when we did drop-in and things like that. So if that is something, you know, that people are signing in the home daycare sector, then we probably should take consideration, because I would definitely not want to be in a contract and be stuck in it, owing somebody money, and needing to take two kids elsewhere, so.
All right. If there's nothing else from council, any final words from anyone?
The lawyer next to me doesn't seem concerned. I said the lawyer next to me doesn't seem concerned.
Well, I don't understand, I'm sorry, Tiffany, I didn't understand what you were saying. You do want language in there that-
I, that if our home daycare providers are asking people to sign a contract, which in some larger cities, and with our daycare situation and the fact that we don't have a ton of spots, that's not uncommon for them to require parents to pay a deposit or even save a spot in a daycare with a contract. I don't know, I never have had to do that here, but I've only had one daycare provider here, and she's been who we've had for the whole time, but I do know that it is a thing. So if that is something, then that does protect the parents, if, you know, they have a substitute for six months and they're stuck in this contract and they're not happy, but they don't have anything to protect them, to break the contract. I mean, we're talking, do I think that's happening? Probably not, but I also don't want to put something in place that's going to hurt somebody unintentionally.
So Ron, in the daycare providers that you spoke to, did it seem like, it sounded like there was a limited list of them, did it sound like they were interested in trying to scrounge up people to be substitute operators?
I guess I didn't have that comment. It had to do with whether, just clarification as to what the program would look like, but it wasn't about finding people to do it. We might have people out there that they don't know, who, it could literally be like a bank of substitute operators, and they can call any one of those as long as they're comfortable and their parents are comfortable with it.
Yeah, I'd see that as being a plus. And sorry, I didn't mean to cut off that train of thought over there. So Rob, did you have a response to the?
Well, if Tiffany were suggesting that by, we should put a limit on the number of, you know, duration, I don't know that that solves it. I mean, I think we, if we said not to exceed two weeks and somebody was out for a month-
I would think 90 days is the number I came up with in my head of thinking, like, that would be where I would be questioning at that point. If it was three months, I'd say, you know, is this a, that's as a parent, and again, I could be off the cusp, but as, that's where I would start being like, okay, maybe, I love my daycare provider, but it's been 90 days, and I would-
Now, when exactly did she get paroled here?
Your time is coming, Joe. No. Yeah, so that was what immediately came into my mind, and maybe some language in there saying that they can even still have them, but, you know, the parents get the right to leave. Again, I don't even know people have contracts, I haven't dealt with that, but I don't want to do that to somebody if they're in that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, David.
I've had kids in home daycares, and I think we signed the contract. It's been a while, but I'm more concerned about the notification process. I would think that the daycare would notify the parents, because that's kind of a firestorm, but like, just because you think it will happen and it's logical that that communication will happen, like, I don't know if we want to rely on that. And maybe, I think the communication and notification is probably more important than necessarily the days. At least that's where I'm at, sitting over here.
What happens if somebody gets sick in the middle of the night and they're able to bring in a substitute? That we say, no, close down instead?
I don't know. I didn't think that far ahead, but, I mean, but I guess it's more like, if it hits a week or something, like, have some type of notification, because, like-
You could say reasonable time.
Give you notice where practical.
Yeah. Yeah, because, like, you're right. If it happens at 2:00 AM, the notification process is going to be pretty difficult, but if you know you're going to be gone for a week, I guess you could be sick for a week, but you also know once you got sick that, you don't know when you're going to get better. So, I don't know.
That's reasonable.
All right, Jordan? City Finance Officer Jordan McQuillan has something to contribute.
I mainly have a question for Ron regarding the requirement to display a license. We added that provision within the proposal, and I'm just curious if that, if the temporary operator would be required to display their license when they're operating at a home facility?
You'll note that we added a subsection C at section 14-128, and it does require the substitute operator to present their license upon demand of any law enforcement, code official, or parent or guardian of a child attending that. So they are required to show that they have the substitute operator license.
May I suggest that we pass this the way it is written? And if people have amendments either as to notices, as Dave suggested, or as to 90 days, we could ask the city attorney to prepare those, and we could consider those at second reading.
Yeah, and it would give the council an opportunity to visit with maybe some at-home daycares that they were familiar or maybe employ, and see if this is even going to be a thing. If none of them are interested in doing this, it might be kind of all for naught in the first place. So I would agree with that. Any other comments before we take our votes? Jordan?
Councilmember Norv Strop.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Ryan Boldt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got an appointment of Brad Gardner to the Aberdeen Board of Zoning and Adjustment, which would replace Mr. Scott Grebner, who has served faithfully for over 12 years on that board. Brett, what happened to Scott?
He just decided that it was time to resign, so we had the opening, and Brad Gardner stated he was interested. His background with construction and his knowledge on codes is being valuable on this board, so we recommend approval pointing Brad.
I'll move that.
Second.
Got a motion, Councilman Ronane. Second, Councilman Rife, any other questions as it relates to this vacancy or Mr. Brad Gardner? All right then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion carries. Next, we've got our possible approval to enter into a preliminary engineering services agreement with the BNSF Railroad. And in Robin's absence here tonight, we've got his assistant, Stu. Stu, what can you tell us about this railroad agreement?
So the railroad is, and the state are looking at upgrading crossings, crossing arms and equipment at several locations. The two locations that are mentioned here on Roosevelt and on Main Street were last studied, well, actually, I don't think Main Street's been studied, but Roosevelt was last studied in 2011, and in our discussion, we just decided that, or was pointed out that there's a lot of difference in traffic there. There's a lot higher traffic volumes on Roosevelt, and with the pending two-way Main Street, we felt that maybe it was appropriate to look at Main Street as well, and just make sure that we're making those crossings as safe as they can be, and to see if there's anything else that we could implement there to help in that regard.
I move to approve the proposed agreement.
Second.
Got a motion, Councilman Ronane. Second, Councilman Norv Strop. Any questions for Stu on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Do you look at the turning lane, then? Are you talking about Roosevelt and Milwaukee?
Yes.
Do you look at the turning lane questions there, then? Because there's one turning lane where you get stuck when there's a train, right? You can't turn. Coming from the south.
Southbound on Roosevelt Street, you can kind of get into a little bit of a no-man's land there, be south of the gates, which is actually probably not a problem in that case, but, you know, you do have, you do have an existing preemption system there that will allow traffic that's going north to turn left.
Yeah.
But-
I feel like if you're going, if you're going, how does that work?
You're talking about-
If you're going north, you can't turn left, I don't think.
Yeah, you can.
Or can you can?
Yep. You can turn left.
Is that when you're going west, you get stopped?
If you're going, if you're going westbound on Milwaukee, you could not turn and go north, obviously, when there's a train there.
Right.
If you're going eastbound on Milwaukee, you would end up having to wait until the train passes.
If you're going west, can you turn left?
If you're going west, yes, you can.
I think you get stuck there. That's right by your house, Carl. You get stuck there?
No, you can go through that.
Can you?
We've changed that, so that, it used to be that way.
Okay. I thought maybe I was dreaming.
How big's your car?
I don't know. I thought I might need some, like, ginkgo biloba here. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Carl saved the day.
How frequently have we engaged in similar contracts with BNSF? Mr. Nelson?
I couldn't tell you the last time. The study that was done in 2011 was a study that I think the railroad entered into by themselves, but I think they feel like we should be participating in these studies, because it is city traffic that's being affected.
And so this is a pass-through expense for them, or is some member of their, okay? That's what I was kind of wondering about. That all makes a little bit more sense then. Any other questions from the council as it relates to this BNSF agreement? All right, Jordan? Would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ryan Boldt.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Norv Strop.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Mr. Nelson will also tell us a little bit about the recommendation on bids for the 2023 sanitary sewer pipelining, which looks like it didn't go real well for us.
It did not. Uh, we received two bids, they were both substantially over our budgeted amount. Uh, and in addition to that, neither firm that submitted a bid submitted on the correct um, form. We had noticed a discrepancy in a couple quantities between what was in the proposal and what was in the um, the technical spec part of the, of the, the uh, bid packet. And we issued in an addendum, and neither contractor used the correct um, sheet from the addendum to submit their bids, so based on the, the, the cost discrepancy and on those abnormalities, we're recommending that we reject these bids and we'll, we'll take another run at it.
Does that require action by the council? Yes, I move that we reject the bids.
A motion from Councilman Ronane, a second from Councilman Langer. Have we worked with these companies before for this lining process?
The previous pipelining that we did a, a few years ago was Municipal Pipe Tool. We worked, I think we had a pretty good relationship with them. We had, you know, a couple little rocky things with their scheduling, but ultimately the work they did was, was very good.
Were they good at filling out forms?
What's that?
Were they good at filling out forms?
Oh yeah, they love to fill out forms.
That's what I figured. That is what I figured. Well, I would uh, just take a voice vote since there's a rejection of a, a bid here, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Next, we've got the presentation from HKG Architects on Public Works Building Space Analysis and Possible Approval of an Agreement with HKG to Perform Design Architecture Services for the new Public Works Facility. Here to speak to us today is my brother Andy Shawman, and I would like to just make mention for clarity that my brother does not own this business, and gets paid the same whether or not we do any work with those guys or not, he is just an employee of that firm, and um, and so I'm free to vote on this matter. So I'll kick it over to, to Andy, maybe pull aside, there you are, make sure the little green light is on, and we've all got your packets in front of us.
Is it pulled up on the screen as well, or I guess you're looking through the packets?
Okay, perfect.
All right. So over the last six months, uh, we've conducted a space needs analysis of the Public Works Department. Now, there's six departments within Public Works at their Third Avenue campus, and each of these departments are integral to keeping the city of Aberdeen operating. Um, the first is sanitation and solid waste, they do the city garbage pickup. The second, the mechanic shop, he service and repairs the city vehicles and equipment. The third, the street does the snow removal, the sweeping, and the street repair and replacement. The utility pipe and meter does the water and sewer line operation, replacement, and does the metering of the customers. Traffic control does the signs, light operations, street painting, city boulevards, and the pump operates and maintains the holding ponds, lift stations, water towers. Now, these six departments have fifty full-time employees and eighteen seasonal. When we started this study with the city, we had a kickoff meeting with Joe, Robin, Stuart, Jeremy, and then the six department foremen. And that's kinda where we first learned about the operations and the challenges that they were facing.
Andy, let's, let's stop you here for a second, and let Austin know that we are not seeing the presentation on our screens.
We're not.
Yeah, this side's not, from, yeah, from, from the mayor over, Austin, to my left, we're not seeing the presentation, so, while, while he works on that, we'll, we'll take a quick break there and see.
Okay, we all have these packets.
Is, is it the same thing? Are you showing, you, you've got a different?
I'm scrolling through the packets, yeah.
Video.
I thought you were doing two different things. Nope. It's moving around now, we'll see if it pops up.
There's nothing on there. I've pushed on off at least eighty times.
I blame Rob.
Well, I was like, what is Justin staring at? I was jealous.
Oh, yeah. We monitor at that work desk, so.
No, but if it's this, I'm fine.
Well, while we work on this, I'll just kinda uh, give you a little bit of the next steps. After Andy's done with, with his presentation, we're gonna talk about um, what the proposed next steps would be, and, and just as we run into this, this is a, this was a space analysis to determine what we needed and what we think it might cost, and, and where we might put it, so um, we'll go from there as it goes on. We're just gonna live with it?
Yeah, as long as you tell us what page you're on.
Okay.
We can all follow along here as well.
And I don't ask. But uh, I, I got it, I, I can see it on the bottom of the screen if it's in the presentation.
They're not numbered.
All right, so I think we are on the third page right now of the handout, for those of you that can't see it on your screen. So at this kickoff meeting, you know, we got the input um, to put together some surveys that we handed out to all fifty of the Public Works employees, and we were able to analyze the results and determine the needs from the user's perspectives. So this was a three-page document, and then, like I said, we looked at all those trends. Next, we spent, so I'm flipped on to page four, and now page five. So this page five kinda shows a bunch of colored boxes that are the buildings on that Third Avenue campus. So we spent a couple of weeks visiting the Third Avenue campus and the additional properties, and we walked through each of these buildings. We measured them, we took inventory, and we studied their functionality. The buildings range up to seventy years old, they've been well-maintained, and most of the offices have had updated finishes, but the overall working conditions vary from poor to worse. None of these structures have carbon monoxide detection, fire alarms, fire suppression, or ventilation. So there's numerous building codes and OSHA deficiencies. Most of the working areas, break rooms, offices, and restrooms are actually in the same area with the running equipment and exhaust. Employee safety is a huge concern, and there is also no kind of building security system anywhere on the site or at any of these buildings. Going on to the next page. This, this is just, I didn't wanna go through a ton of pictures and just give you guys a tour of it, but if you're not familiar with it, this is just kind of a generalization of the facilities. So the top-left photo would be the mechanic shop, the top-right photo would be where they're storing their street vehicles at. The bottom-left would be their training area, and then the bottom-right would be just kind of almost their typical bathrooms that they're dealing with out there. So, you know, while studying the traffic flow and the building function, it became obvious that the current facility layout was restricting, restricting the employees from completing their duties in a timely manner. I mean, there's numerous examples of employees losing hours just trying to access equipment there. Um, so the next part of the analysis, we actually did a tour, so if you go on to the next page. So Rob and Jeremy, Caitlin, Rachel, myself from HKG, and then the six department foremen from Public Works did an east and a west river tour. On the east river tour, we went to Brookings, Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, and Huron. And then on the west river tour, we went to Bismarck, Dickinson, Gillette, and Sturgis. Now, these were all recently built facilities. On the tours, we were able to meet with the Public Works directors and their staff. We asked them questions about what they were happy with and what they would do differently with their building projects. The department foremen were able to meet and see what their different counterparts were doing and gather ideas. We were able to get construction documents from many of these facilities that we visited, so we were able to analyze them for what the sizes of offices, welding stations, mechanic shops, and vehicle storage areas that they did. Um, so the next page or slide would be the west river tour stops, that was a pretty lengthy drive there. We thank Jeremy for doing it, you drove the bus. And then the next page, once again, this is just kind of a typical, what we were seeing on these tours, the top-left is a mechanic shop, the top-right is a vehicle storage area, the bottom-left is a training room, and then the bottom-right would be a locker room slash restroom facility. Going on to the next page. So when we got back from these facility tours, uh, we sat down with all the foremen and we did interviews, and we tried to get their feedback of what they thought about these facilities, and what they would do differently within their departments, and what kind of future changes they could foresee. And then we did the site evaluation part of this analysis. There was five separate sites that we looked at. Um, the northwest holding pond, the west industrial park, the city stockpile site, the southwest holding pond, and the Hyman Drive site. Now, we graded all of these sites on topography, floodplains, soils, access, size, utilities, cost, location, orientation, and function. And there was two that kind of emerged as, you know, getting graded out as the highest, and that was the northwest holding pond and the southwest holding pond. So this would be the northwest holding pond, if you go on to the next page. Um, we kind of, you know, if we put every kind of function that they have at this public works, their stockpile, their salt storage, their coal storage, their building, their parking lot, to see how it would fit and how that would work within the, the site. The next one would be the southwest holding pond, if you turn to the next page or slide. Now, this one doesn't have as many things on it. Um, there is some economy to this site, they already have an existing storage building on it, so they wouldn't need to build one of those. And then they also have their stockpiles right across the street from Melgarde, so they wouldn't necessarily need to stage all of those on this site. So those are some of the advantages. Um, going on to the next page is a, is a floor plan. Now, what we did was, we started with a direct replacement of what the Public Works Department currently has, and then we added the missing pieces like a reception area, a training room, locker rooms, wash bays, and then we added a little room for growth. And we organized the facility for efficient operation of each of the departments and economical construction. The Public Works Department gave us feedback, and then we drew in each piece of their equipment in the vehicle storage area to ensure they would fit. And then the last page is our estimate of probable cost. So that is looking at, you know, bids that we've had recently, that's kinda how we got those square footage numbers. And then if you look down in the lower right corner, um, just kind of talking with Robin about some possibilities of doing some value engineering, and then if there is some bid improvement in, in the spring, which there usually is versus the end of uh, the construction season, you know, those numbers, you know, optimistically, maybe it could be as low as fifteen percent lower. So that, that is, I was told by Joe to keep it brief, so like I said, I didn't wanna get too much into the weeds on this, but I'll open it up for questions at this point.
Well, first of all, thank you, I think it was very thorough, I appreciate you bringing this. Looks like Councilman Rife has a question for you.
Yeah, you talked about the two different sites and how the one on the southwest has some infrastructure currently there. Is there a price difference between the two sites?
Um, yeah, so if you're looking at the, at the estimate of cost here, so that asphalt stockpile pad wouldn't be needed, and then also that um, covered cold storage area wouldn't be needed, so like right off the bat, you know, that's probably six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of the high estimate.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
So both sites that you're looking at, Andy, would be current holding ponds, basically?
Right, so the, the northwest site has a little bit more of, it's a little bit more of a slough, a little bit more of some flood area over there. It is the largest of the sites, I'm gonna scroll back through the site evaluation. So the northwest holding pond is twenty-six acres. Um, that was kind of, you know, um, out, out of the sites that actually work. So we also looked at a Hyman Drive, which the city doesn't own, so looking at the cost of the project, plus having to purchase the property, that one made that one a little tougher to swallow. And then the city stockpile site is, is the old landfill, so it, it's not very good to build on, you're gonna have to bring in a lot of soils, do a lot of remediation, and also there's no utilities out there at all. So those were the two biggest sites, so this northwest holding pond was kinda the next biggest area, and that was one of the things we really saw in the tours and stuff was, like Brookings, you can get landlocked in. So they had an existing facility, part of it burned down, they did a big addition, and then they were just stuck, they couldn't do anymore. They wanted to add on, they wanted to bring in more departments, and they couldn't, they're just kind of, you know, gonna have to have multiple satellite um, facilities to operate. Um, so I mean, I think looking at, you know, um, the adaptability and the usability of the site size is, is, you know, definitely one of the things that the city is looking for.
Thanks, I was gonna ask Stu, how does that change um, our flood plane, our flood planning if we take a holding pond and build on it?
These both would be constructed on land that is adjacent to the holding ponds. Um, it's, it's land that was kind of part and parcel to um, constructing the holding ponds, but it's just extra land, there wouldn't be any change to uh, to storm drainage or anything like that. Um, part of the area, like for instance, the, the southwest site, that is an area that we use, and you probably saw it this last um, winter and spring where we dumped snow. I mean, that was, that was a huge snow pile. Uh, the other site up on the northwest area, we bought that, I think it was like a hundred and eleven acres to originally construct that, um, that northwest holding pond that's there, but this is the leftover remnant of that.
Thanks. Another question on?
Go ahead, Councilman.
This, this one's for Brett. One for everyone. So on the City of Aberdeen master plan, the thoroughfare plan, when you're looking at that, the, the north location, that northwest location's on a major highway, but the southwest location's not like on something we've identified as a thoroughfare, right?
That's correct.
So, is, is the southwest location safer then in terms of not having large trucks coming out and at all, all times of the day and night onto a busy highway?
I, I guess without looking at the traffic counts of each of the individual roads, it'd be hard to tell which I would classify as being safer. I, 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 I guess from just my knowledge of, excuse me, both of those areas, the traffic counts are gonna end up being the same, it's all gonna depend on the time of day. I actually think the Melgarde Road site might be a little busier just cause you have the high school in that area, compared to the one to the north.
But the one to the north, sorry.
How about, how about speed limits?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, what's the speed limit? It's fifty up there where the dog park is, isn't it?
Boy, I don't, I don't know what the speed limits are.
I think that's forty-five up there, and it's thirty-five down, well, where the, on the southwest, that would be forty-five as well.
Which I guess if it's always a safety issue, it's something we can look at down the road is, is changing the speed on those, those roads.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask another question?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so then if you look at the plan for the growth of Aberdeen and where the new neighborhoods are gonna be in Aberdeen and, and where we're planning for growth, um, which neighborhood is less likely to become a neighborhood?
Uh, the northwest.
Why?
Because there's a lot of wetland up in that area, a lot of slough. And not to mention.
And the southwest already has.
And the southwest already has a lot of homes in that area, that was my next thing to point out.
So if we were to look at the property that the city owns on the south side, you know, we obviously own the land that, that continues on northward of that proposed facility, um, is there any reason why there would not be development further south of that neighborhood?
Oh, we're hoping there is. You know, that's, that's kind of a, a future plan.
And Happy's been responsible for each of those other two steps along the way on the south side, I believe, is that?
That is correct.
Do they don't own that land or anything?
Not at this point, no.
And to the land to the west of that parcel, does that, that's farmed and then? And to the land to the west of that parcel, does that, that's farmed and then there's the, um, cemetery further west yet? There's, there's a buffer between the two, right?
The land to the west of where the site they're looking at is the holding pond, the actual pond is.
This is.
And that's the cemetery.
Any other questions for Andy or either of those two? Go ahead, Justin?
Will the traffic be going down the South Twelfth Street quite often, because I know already it does, going to the other shop? So are they gonna use South Twelfth Street to go to and from?
I'm, I'm not sure operations wise, how much traffic they would be directing to the north there. Um, during snow removal, I think is probably when you see the highest amount of truck traffic down there right now. And that I don't think would change. Um, but I would think that they would use Melgarde Road probably more predominantly than. Than going north and, and trying to, you know, kind of snake through that residential area there.
Cause I, I can tell you right now, I would run home at lunch, and I'll see a loader driving down that dirt path. Over lunch, and I don't go home for lunch very often, but, I mean, it seems every day that there. At least a couple of city trucks going down that twelfth street, you know, and there is a home daycare right on that road.
Right.
You know, so that's something that should be taken into account, along with the noise level that'll be in that neighborhood. So.
I, I think I can add to an explanation on that, so south of this site is what we're talking about where some of the scales of economy come is the stockpiles. So right now, what you're seeing is those loaders coming from the third street location through your neighborhoods and to those stockpiles. So they would already be, you know, past your neighborhood, at your neighborhood, and then go south. So that's why you're seeing them, is they're coming from third street to those stockpiles.
Where will the stockpiles exist in this layout?
They're, they're across the road.
Okay, cause we own some of that land now where the old dump used to be. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Uh, well, first off, I think this is great, but I was not expecting this thorough of information. In general, the tours are so cool, and I'm kind of jealous I didn't get to go, because I feel like that would be fun.
This is not on, um, so moving forward, if we were to move forward with this tonight, on, on this specific, do we pick? Tonight as well, do we have to pick, how does that work, like how does a site get picked?
I, I don't think we're at the point where we narrow down the site yet, but you're probably not too far away. One of the things we wanted to show you was kind of, here's the two best sites that we own. Um, they, they have some differing issues, think about that a little bit, um, you know, as it gets out, you know, do we hear things from other folks? But I do think narrowing it down, um, is, is potentially sooner than later will happen. There's also another reason was this, is to look at, you know, is new construction the only thing, or does something else start to fit this? So when you look at your, you know, this was a space analysis, um, we don't know that anything else exists, but something might pop up. So that's kind of the, the thought process moving forward on the sites.
Well, Joe, tell us a little bit about, what would the approval of the agreement to perform design architectural services? What would the affirmative vote on that entail?
So that would be to keep this moving along, um, towards construction of, let's get to, what are we gonna do, and how much is it gonna cost to, to build it? Or if you found a site, uh, to renovate it, uh, to be able to put it out to bid next spring to, to move forward.
Rob had something.
Go ahead, uh, how about Josh first, then I'll get Rob.
Can you talk about how you arrive at your professional services fee, is it a percentage of the project, is it square footage, how do you arrive at that?
Um, so typically, the standard in the industry is a percentage. So we kind of start like, a lot of, you know, mid-sized projects that are a few million dollars, a lot of times your percent ends up being about seven percent. So we had, when we were doing earlier on on the cost estimates, we were looking at like a six something percent because of the size of the project. Um, but then talking with Robin, um, we ended up taking out the construction administration portion of this. As well as, um, the civil engineering, the city was planning on doing that in-house. And then he wanted to do an hourly, and he was like, what, what, what would it take to get this, you know, ready to go for bids in February? So we looked at the actual hours that would take to do that, I think we ended up somewhere around like a four percent fee or something, using that.
Good, thank you.
Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, you know, my question really was, uh, similar to yours, I'm, I'm curious what we are. First of all, I've never seen a project where we talk about the architecture before we know the site. That does seem to me to be, uh, to be maybe putting, uh, putting the cart before the horse, but, but, but maybe we aren't doing all of the architecture. What are we, what are we signing on today for if we, if we approve this, that's awful English, but.
Right, that, that would be, this would be, all of the design services, so getting it ready to where it's ready to bid. So that does include finalizing the site.
So even if we, um, found another, found an existing building or a series of buildings to refurb, we're spending, we're spending this money.
Well, and again, this is up to a certain amount, so like Andy said, this is an hourly rate, so whatever we decide to do. Uh, there's gonna have to be some, some architectural fees in it.
So I'm curious, is there, uh, potential sites that you're, that you have in your minds when you're saying renovation?
Yeah, um, there's, there's been one that's existed throughout this, um, that's the MFAG, or MFG building. Um, that initially we thought might, might have some, some opportunities, it may still. Um, let's keep in mind that where we get our money is tax revenue, so right now that's on the tax rolls. It was billed as industrial property, it probably is best to stay there, and I know there's some folks looking at it. But if it became available, I think it was, should be something that you should look at and say, well, what would it cost to renovate that? Um, versus building, I'm not sure it'd be that far different, um, by the time you get it. So I would probably, uh, you know, propose going with the new construction built for this reason. But I, I think if that was, that was an opportunity, I'd, I'd encourage you to look at it.
So this total square footage indicates a hundred and sixteen thousand square feet, how, about how big is the MFG plant?
I'm not sure, Dean was raising his hand like he knows, so.
I was hired by, um, uh, a firm out of California to remodel it. So, and they've got twelve million, they bought, purchased for twelve million, and we got eight million. It's three hundred and thirty thousand square feet, and the walls are forty-five to thirty-five feet high. Plus, it's not air-conditioned, some of it, some of it is all heating, so we had eight million into. And it was a number of the contractors in town, which included, um, metal sick, or met, sick metal engineering. Um, steel structures, all that, in order to break it up into portions. And they're varying cost between six and eight million dollars to different things, and divided into four spaces, so. Um, it gets. We don't, you don't need this space, some of the thing is, we, and we talked about that when we're developing this, just the sheer volume is more than what the city would need. I mean, for equipment, we're not going forty-five feet in the air, so it's, it makes it, uh, difficult. Project for long-term, and I'm not trying to get down on the building, but saying it's heating and cooling that building, you know, after the fact, so.
It was built for spe, such a specialized purpose, it's hard to retrofit.
And they did take, if they were left, if the, if the, if the cranes would still be there, that would be something we could look at, but those have all been removed. So, we've had costs, and this, the new building for those cranes that are specifically made, like Andy talked about when they toured. That are made for a city shops, you know, the size versus, uh, you know, wind turbine. Those were pretty massive, so it was a big, it was, it's a big building.
What about the, the county jail building, about how big of a structure is that?
Um, that was much smaller, and it has been sold for industrial use, so it'll stay on the, the things. But we, we initially looked at that, I don't think it might have been big enough for what we were gonna do.
All right, thank you both.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Can I, I have a question about southeast, like over by the airport, I'm, I'm in favor of southwest more than. I'm in favor of northwest more than southwest, only because of the neighborhood and the traffic. But in the northwest, if you think forward ten years, you've got that really pretty part of Presentation Campus, the west part where they've maintained the grasslands, right? And then you've got that dog park that's gonna be right next to this, and then you've got Wiley Park, right? And so if you think forward ten years, that could be really a beautiful area for our city, almost like. A giant parkland from Presentation College to, to Wiley Park in some sense, instead of have this giant building. Which I'm sure will be beautiful, in the middle of it all, um, it just sort of breaks up the flow. And what, what would be a really attractive area to have future neighborhoods around? And so with the airport, the airport's not moving, so is there a space closer to the airport in the southeast that? We should be considering?
There wouldn't be anything we own, I'm kind of looking at Stu and, and Brett, there wouldn't be anything we own. And there was a site that we didn't own, um, that we looked at because it really can't be used for anything else, a lot of the things you said, um, it can't be used for. But it will cost quite a little bit of money and add, add on to it, it would be more in that, that area of town. Um, but looking at, as this price got bigger, we decided we wanted to bring you things that we own. Uh, if you want to encourage us to, to spend more money on, on sites we don't own, that might fit some of those, check some of those boxes, uh. We'll do it, we'll, we'll look at it.
It, it was ranked third on the site evaluation.
And where specifically was that at, Andy?
Um, behind Gelling's over there, out of Roosevelt, it's kind of like a dead end there and.
Yeah, it really can't be used for anything, there is some floodplain around the edge, it looks like a much bigger usable piece of property, it's probably half usable.
Mr. Mayor, that, that, that land is also like brownfield, it's, it's polluted. That Hyman Drive land, but the, if you go to the airport, there's no way we don't own land around the airport. I mean, it's not like the airport takes up all of the land that we own around the airport, right?
Well, it's all within the airport fence, we don't own anything outside of the airport fence.
And the problem with developing near the airport, then you've got FAA regulations to deal with, runway protection zone, crash zone, those sorts of things that. Really get convoluted and complicated.
So essentially, in essence, I guess the, in terms of the magnitude of a vote here tonight. If we were to, um, get this thing up and going, to what degree does that signify that this project is going to be a hundred percent completed? Like, we pull the brakes on this thing if it looked like financing wasn't going to be feasible, or that sort of a thing?
Exactly, you know, oftentimes we say shelf-ready, there's a project shelf-ready, and maybe now's not the time to build. Because maybe we don't have quite the right site, or we don't have quite the money in, in hand. As good as this presentation tonight is, we're not shelf-ready yet. Um, but, uh, this next step would, and if somewhere along the way, uh, you wanted to put the brakes on it. Um, and, and say, well, maybe we shouldn't do this, you're paying the hourly rate, and you could stop at that point in time. Um, I, I think if we continue to look at this, and one of the things that Andy said is. These facilities are outdated, um, the staff's done what they could, but they're really not up to modern day working conditions. And when you talk about retaining employees and recruiting employees, um, here's a fun fact. Um, when, when, uh, the city manager was recruited three years ago, we took a tour around town of all the beautiful city facilities. And it was amazing, this is a cool old building, but it's brand new on the inside. And, and amazing police department, uh, good fire stations, uh, they could be a little bigger, but then we, we're growing to need more, but they're good. Um, an amazing library, um, we even drove by the Ride Line Building. About two weeks after I'd been hired, when I was certain, over searching for houses, it hit me that we didn't drive by the shop. And Robin Bobzine was the tour guide. And so I had to, I found the shops and drove by them, and I'm like, well, they're shops, they're old, you can tell what they are. And so after I got here, I kind of rev, ribbed Robin a little bit about why did we not drive by your shops? And he goes, well, because quite frankly, uh, we want to show you the good things about our city, and that's not one of them. And so, when you think of that, um, our, our city employees, uh, I've talked to several folks. Um, since it was announced that I'm leaving in Public Works, and they're really scared that this building proposal would disappear. Um, Robin's a big advocate for this, we need to do this, uh, so that we can work faster, better, be more efficient. Uh, and treat all of our employees right, not everybody's working in a nice, uh, building, we need to point that out. So I think it's important that we do that, this is more money than we thought it was gonna be, there's, there's no doubt about that. So looking at this, uh, are there ways to make it more affordable, uh, are there ways to phase it? Not easily, but could we, you know, purchase some land and then start a little bit later? Uh, this is gonna take some bonding, um, that's what it's gonna have to do, we bonded for a lot of things. Uh, when we bonded for the swimming pool, we took money away from the streets. Um, so we've done this before, um, and I'm gonna encourage you to keep looking at this, I won't be here to do it, but, um, it would be a travesty not to see this through.
Thank you, Joe, anyone else on the council, have anything to input? A lot of good questions, a lot of good discussions. If you got a vote, we've got a second, anything before we take our vote on kicking this agreement off?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I'm, I'm in favor of a new building for all the reasons that Joe just said, and, and, and it's forward thinking. I, I just, back to Rob's question, what are we agree, when does the decision get made on the site? Cause I feel like the council should really have a say in that, and also we don't have any sort of an environmental study of what's.
Exactly, that's, that's just it.
Factor.
Is they would go through and look at both sites and all of the things, what are the environmental concerns, what are the cost savings, what are the extra costs? And bring, to me, that's the first steps of, of the, this agreement, is you'll agree to this, and they'll do the more analysis on the sites. Um, and, and then bring that to you and determine the site, and then start designing the facility on that site. So yes, that, that is part of this, and you're right, probably the first step. Am I wrong, Andy, or?
You promise, Andy, you're not just gonna build it? Build for twenty-four million dollars?
Yeah, well, there's, uh, you know, like I said, when, when I first heard the, you know, go out for a spring bid from Robin, that is an aggressive schedule. But, uh, he said that the city is, you know, willing to do whatever it takes to, you know, meet all the timelines and, you know. I mean, obviously, they're busy over there with what they're doing, so.
Did he say a spring of what year?
All right, if there's nothing else, Jordan, I'm gonna have you go ahead with a roll call vote.
We don't, we don't have a motion yet, we did the proposal, now we need a.
Oh, that's true, I thought we had our motion and our second, well, if someone was so inclined as to, uh, to make a motion on the agreement for this. Architectural services.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Quick question, sorry.
No problem.
All the questions, um. If we were to identify, like, is this, when we go on this, are we able to potentially suggest or talk about? If there is something in the southeast that could potentially be a good location, just because Melgarde is right there and the traffic is already kind of in that corner? Is that something that can be mocked up or talked about, or once we approve this, is this, these two sites and?
Well, Stu, why don't you talk to us a little bit about the relationship between our internal department then? The decision-making there, as well as, uh, kind of coordinating off, uh, potential spaces and that, and working with HKG. How do you foresee this agreement falling into place?
I guess, um, I think we, we touched on this, but I don't know that we really, um, and I, I promise I'm gonna get to your question.
You're fine.
Um, we have a, uh, this agreement is a, uh, not to exceed number. But it doesn't necessarily mean that that's the total cost, so if we could find a site that was an existing structure. You might end up with a little bit lower, um, total fee for the, for the design work, it's possible. Um, that being said, I think if other sites, um, come to light, that would, that would. Maybe be a little bit more appropriate, but there are sites that the city doesn't own. Um, we would entertain those, just like we have with the, the five sites that we had earlier. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think anything's on the table still right now. And, uh, you know, we've been proceeding with trying to identify city-owned property. Just so we're not taking, um, additional property off the tax rolls. However, if you're looking at a primarily undeveloped site, then obviously that impact is not nearly as significant. If you, as if you're taking a three hundred and thirty thousand square foot building and taking that off the tax rolls. So, yeah, I think absolutely we would be, we would entertain any, any suggestion for that.
I'm moved with proof.
Got a motion, Councilman Rife, second, Councilman Norvstrup. Kind of had the discussion, but anyone last before we, uh, take the voice vote, allow anyone to chime in? All right, Jordan?
Councilmember Ronan.
Aye.
Foberg.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Rife. Aye. Johnson. Councilmember Johnson.
Aye, can you hear?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Norvstrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry, thank you for joining us tonight, HKG and other members of our staff. Next, we've got our review and approval of claims and payrolls, we've got the bills for the. Next, we've got our review and approval of claims and payrolls. We've got the bills for this week, August twenty-eighth. Of course, and the pay period that we will be voting on tonight is August thirteenth through the twenty-sixth, as well as the associated costs with these employee paychecks. I would take a motion to pay our bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, Councilman Reinbold, second. Councilwoman Lee Belt. And then Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Norvstrup.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lee Belt.
Aye.
Foeburg.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
I will abstain as to climate control, but the rest I would vote in the affirmative and motion does carry. Next, we've got our city manager's report. Joe, what can you tell us here this evening?
Um, one thing, the city attorney asked me to remind you, uh, in one of my writ reports here a few weeks ago, we mentioned that you would need to have a discussion on what to do with, uh, uh, dispensary permits that have not been used and have expired. So that'll be something you'll be talking about in one of your upcoming September meetings. We'd originally thought we'd be ready to talk about it, but we thought giving a little more time would be good. And then let's talk about the August, uh, milestones for employee anniversaries. We had three folks hitting five years, um, in August, Bernie Hubert in Streets, Austin Fishbeck in Fire, and Tina Hubert in PD. Um, and then, uh, we went from twenty-five, or from five to twenty-five. So Pat Schloty, the, uh, pipe foreman or, uh, pump foreman, pump foreman, um, hit twenty-five years. We appreciate all those folks. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Joe, and thanks to Bernie, Austin, Tina, and Pat for your dedicated service to the city of Aberdeen. Genuinely appreciate that. And hopefully you've been enjoying your service to the city. Um, we've got an executive session next to discuss some personnel and contractual matters. So I would take a moment to, uh, to clear the room.